...to convene this meeting of the Gardner Planning Board. Tonight's agenda, under Old Businesses, we're going to continue discussions on City Council zoning amendments referred to our board for recommendations, specifically 10891, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, chapter 675 thereof entitled zoning, to change the classification of certain parcels of land along 140. Now, if you recall from last week, we received a presentation from Mayor Nicholson, and we had some discussions around watershed and open space, and we tabled it in search of more information. In the interim, Mayor Nicholson has sent us a rather detailed memorandum outlining various facts and figures surrounding watershed and open space, with attachments and illustrations of the area. At this time, I'd like to invite the mayor to the floor to go through with us with.
Very much, Mr. Chairman. The Director Bureau Guard, Engineer Oliver and myself did go through all of the questions in as much detail as we could to make sure that the board did have enough data for it. The confusion that was had at the end of the last meeting was that Director Bureau Guard and I realized that we were talking about two different things. I was focused on the city-owned parcels of land, he was focused on the full area. So there was some watershed land in the original proposal that was put forward. In working with the city engineers, we worked to figure out where that watershed actually was. And basically, what I would recommend from the administration to the city council on our end is to remove all parcels that have watershed in them from the proposal. Now, there's a couple of things that go with this. First off, even if they were to stay by statute, city statute, under the city code, if I may, Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I use some of the, thank you.
My own means.
I did print up this section of the city code here. There is a provision in the city code that states anything that's watershed land is unable to be sold by the city. It must be maintained. So that would have already been taken care of even if the zoning went forward, but it's just cleaner that way. So that's why you'll notice up here, this red area would be the new proposed zoning change if the council votes to go through with that amendment on how things go. The ways that this affects zoning, because there was a question as to what would be considered spot zoning and what would not. The Griswold case that the Supreme Court took up, ruled that was based on a city in Alaska, stated that if there was a benefit to the municipality as a whole, it would not be considered spot zoning, as the spot zoning is defined as zoning of one single particular parcel that is different, substantially different from those that surround it that benefit a private landowner to the detriment of other private landowners in the area. Where this is public land, there's some different regulations that go with that. This has been interpreted in the Commonwealth even further, in the Lanner case and the Rando case, which states, both stated that if there is any public benefit, a rezoning cannot be considered spot zoning. So as such, since this would bring in increased tax revenue for the city and increased economic opportunity and meet some of the city's economic development goals, that's how we can get around that. But even if it wasn't, it's still more than one parcel that are contiguous with each other over the Route 140 area. So that's how we are able to, still be able to go forward this without any spot zoning concerns. The definition of watershed is actually found within the city ordinances itself, under chapter 673, and it lists which specific bodies of water are considered to be part of the city's watershed. It's all of the city's drinking water supplies and Mamjohn Pond, which I know also came up the last time. The city engineer and I had only heard of Mamjohn Pond as Cowee Pond before this conversation took place, because at some point in time, the name changed, we don't know why. But depending on what map you look at, the this one that the city engineer's office had that says Cowee, or this one that the DPW had that says Mamjohn, it's the same location here too. So basically, we mapped out the watershed based on the definition, both in our city ordinances and per the Code of Massachusetts regulations, and this is upside down. But this is what came here. The watershed is defined as Zones A, which you see in this blue hash marks here, Zone B, which is this pink hash marks, and Zone C, which is the solid pink area here. It's dependent on how far out from the body of water source you go, and the city engineer can talk a lot more in detail as to how scientifically that all meets its matter there. So this shaded area here is the watershed, and as you can see, these two parcels are completely out of the watershed. Now, there was a question about the, and I'm just turning my pages here to make sure I hit on everything. The Surface Water Protection Overlay District, which exists in the city's zoning code. Now, this is a zoning code that regulates what can and cannot be done within this specific overlay. It does not create watershed land as its zoning. Watershed land is a very scientifically-based definition, based on topography, based on distance from a water source, based on the amount of time it takes for something to run into a body of water within that timeframe there. Zoning, again, just regulates what can and cannot be done. The Surface Water Overlay Protection District also says that there are certain things that can be done within the district that's there, upon receiving a special permit from the planning board. So it's not an outright prohibition, like we see in certain areas of the watershed as well. Now, the Surface Water Protection Overlay District is this pink line that you see here, so it does encompass a portion of the proposal as well. However, again, that would all be regulated through special permit processes through the planning board. So there are different ways that it's been done, and you'll see that there's even underground storage tanks, different type of car repair things, all of that stuff is allowed in that district already as it is. I hope we see something more better than that. That's proper English. I think we see something better than that in this section if we were to go out, and I think we could control that through the request for proposal process as well. But just to show that the difference between a zoning overlay versus scientifically-defined watershed land, that's the difference that you see here. The watershed is regarded by just this teal dotted line, or just the shaded area that you see here, where this pink dotted line out here is simply just the zoning overlay. It does not constitute additional watershed land, and that's been confirmed with both the city engineer's office and the city's building commissioner, even though he's in an acting capacity right now as the city's zoning enforcement officer. Are there any questions on the watershed land aspect of it? In terms of the open space questions that were raised, the city's open space and recreation plan define the protection levels as being obtained through these processes here. The ones that exist for public land are in the memorandum that's attached here. Land acquired for watershed or aquifer protection are usually permanently protected as open space. This has been interpreted in different locations through the Commonwealth and the Commonwealth's Cabinet Departments as meaning through votes when the parcels are required. The deeds for both of these properties are included within your packet this evening. One was given to the Gardner School Department in case there was need for an additional school out, back when we had neighborhood schools in 1888. And in 1931, Harriet Haywood donated the upper, I should have this map still available here. The land that was deeded to the school district was this land up here. This land here was donated by, or not donated, sold to the city in the 1930s by Harriet Haywood. And there is no deed restriction on either of these, listed in either of those deeds. We went back and went directly to the registry of deeds for these copies that way, in case there was something that we were missing in our files, something that hadn't been uploaded online. We went directly to the registry for these, and you can see those deeds included there, one is in handwritten even. But there's no mention of any conservation purposes there, nor is there a vote of the city council that placed a conservation restriction on any of these. The next one is provided that they have been dedicated as conservation or open space in the deed. We just went over that. Municipal properties may be protected via vote of the city council to acquire them as protected properties. There are no votes for either of these properties on record with the city at all. In fact, back in the 2010 era, there was a proposal by the Patrick Murray administration to the city to put these parcels into protected open space conservation. The Commonwealth was going to compensate the city about $500 per acre that it was going to put into conservation, and that was not done under the previous administration. No votes were ever put forward before the city council, no money changed hands. The city did not receive the close to $2 million that the Commonwealth offered for the several hundred acres of conservation land that the city chose not to place into conservation through that process. Finally, through protections of Article 97 of the Constitution, Article 97 of the Constitution of the Land Protection Act states that if a parcel is acquired as open space, playground, or conservation land, and again, acquired through that is the key term there, then it is protected and has to go through a vote of the state legislature in order for it to be disposed of. Now, that governs the disposal of the land, not the zoning or anything like that of the land. Now, this part, both parcels here are not currently protected under Article 97. There is an exemption under Article 97 that the Supreme Judicial Court has put forward through it, in the Smith case. However, that also does not apply here, but if the board is interested. It was the city of Westfield obtained a federal grant from the Department of the Interior to build a playground on a land that they had bought through the school department. The grant contract from the Department of the Interior had a clause in the contract saying, if a municipality accepts this funding, the land must be permanently used for playground purposes. So as such, the court rules that under contract law, they put a restriction on the land by accepting the funding that they did from the federal government for that land purpose. There has been no grants used for that here. There have been no restrictions placed on the property. You have a list in your packet of all of the properties in Gardner that have actual, that are city-owned, that have actual conservation restrictions on them. There are 13 total. Neither of these parcels are listed in that list, because they just simply were never voted on, never recorded, never, there's no restrictions that have ever been put forward for these two properties here. And again, the ways that these would go forward from here, if the zoning passes, is we'd go to the council for a vote to declare the land surplus for purposes of disposition. We'd go up through a public request for proposal process. We could evaluate then. I actually don't even get the first look at the proposals that come in. I have to appoint a committee of three to five individuals who review all of those on a technical basis first, by state law. It has to be in a separate sealed envelope, the technical proposal and the price proposal. We are not allowed to touch the price proposals until that three to five member committee reviews what wants to be done with the land, what the intended uses are, if they have the financial backing to be able to do that type of use with it. Once those are done, I then have to review those recommendations from the committee and then the technical proposals then. Then, only at that point are the price proposals then opened up, and whoever receives the highest technical use or the best use of the land in the best interest of the city that also then has the highest price after that ranking is done, has to be whoever it's awarded to. Or we could reject them all, if we feel like none of them are in the best interest of the city. So that will be, if this goes forward, what the next step in the process will be. There'll be a written document from me before the joint public hearing on Monday, going to this board and to the city council, outlining that process, the traffic safety concerns, everything we went over last week and everything we went over today, as well, just so it's all in one cohesive document with all the exhibitions together. Something I thought might be interesting of note is that the city engineer was able to find these two maps while we were looking through all of this here. This is a map from 1954 that maps the watershed in the city. The parcels here and here are shaded out. One is listed as land owned by the city of Gardner Water Department, not watershed land, and the other one is land owned by the city of Gardner, not watershed land, other department. So you can see even back in 1954, these parcels were not considered as part of the watershed. The other map that you have in front of you that's also kind of hard to read, let me make sure it's all right. This is from 1958. Again, you can see here, it says, written right on it here, water department land off of the watershed, and here, city land off of the watershed. And you can tell through the different directional changes of the hash marks here and here, and the red and the green coloring here. So it was called up back then as not watershed land. In your packet, there's another map that we didn't have time to print big. I don't know what attachment number it is, I believe it's F. It's not F?
I think it's D.
Yes, thank you.
Well, there's a picture of it.
And up there's D, and then the one before that one, so C, yes. This is a map from 1942 that also shows the same thing, of the land not being considered within the watershed too. So for certain, since my grandfather graduated Gardner High School, it's been documented with the city that the land is not watershed. So again, happy to answer any questions on any of the information that we've presented for you here today with regard to the open space, or with regard to the watershed distinction.
Another question, Mr. Mayor, relative to oil storage tanks. Are those connected with properties that people live on currently, or they sort of abandoned oil storage tanks? Do you know?
I hope that we don't see any more oil storage tanks in the city right now. What's listed in the ordinance itself is that if a property needs, I think it's because they allow car facilities in the overlay, that if they needed an oil storage tank, they could have something there. I don't think this is good to have here, even if it is not watershed land, just because it's close to watershed land, and I think that's something we can judge through the RFP. But that's something that, I don't think it would be considered freestanding, but that would be controlled through site plan approval and special permit authorization by the planning board.
Okay. The other question is, the property on the left side of, or west side of 140, the portion of the property that is in, is in the town of Winchandon.
This one, yes.
I think you implied that there were some entities that were interested in it. If that really did happen, I'm just going a what-if. Would that be a city, city of Gardner issue, or a town of Winchandon? I think it belonged in Winchandon.
It would depend on whether, what side of the line they're on.
Well, I'm meaning, meaning that if it was.
That would be, that would be a town of Winchandon issue, but there's no public road access to it from Winchandon.
No.
So we, and if it was, if it crossed the line too, it would be in both. We pay a couple of grand in taxes to Winchandon every year due to that land, and some other land that we own within the town of Winchandon. I think we're the second biggest landowner in the town of Winchandon right now. So it's one of those, it depends on what side of the line they go on. If it's only in Winchandon, Winchandon would have control. If it's only in Gardner, we would have control. If it crosses the line, then we both would have control over it.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. The zoning, if it goes through, would stop at the city line. Anything past, if Winchandon wanted to do a zoning change, that's on them, but we can only control up to the line, we can't control this section of the parcel.
Good to know, okay.
Mr. Mayor, speaking to open space and recreation.
Yes, sir.
Your position is that these parcels, despite their historical use as open space recreation land, are not protected lands, because you can't find, correct me if I'm wrong, deed restriction, conservation easement, or documented city council protection vote? Yeah, formal, formal city council action, that's what I'm trying to spit out.
Yes, which is the statutory definition for those protections, yes.
Now, the Open Space and Recreation Plan that includes those parcels was approved by vote of the city council. How do you reconcile that?
So the way that that has been reconciled, because we looked into that not only in our own opinion then, but through different legal lenses, different case law that's been approved and things of that nature, is that it's in the preamble of the Open Space and Recreation Plan that this plan is set to guide the city in its path going forward in terms of what to use as protected open space, what to protect, what to move forward. Therefore, the document, while endorsed by the city council, and it's actually listed in the, I wish I had a copy of it here, I can get that for the public hearing, in the resolution that the council passed, is that it accepts the document as a guide for suggestion moving forward, I believe is the phrase that's used in the resolution. Therefore, it's not considered a binding vote to endorse the document, even though, again, while the doc, we don't know why the document said protected open space for one of these parcels, because there's no basis for that to be made in talking with Director Bureau Guard. We think someone just thought it was protected and put it that way. But in terms of the vote action by the city council, because of the way that the resolutions crafted by the Commonwealth are written, they're not considered binding, they're considered guides and suggestions for paths of improvement.
Well, that in turn would indicate that the Open Space and Recreation Plan really has no teeth to it. Protected is not protected. Is that what I understand?
Within the Open Space Plan, correct. The only way to fully protect a property is through an actual conservation restricted vote, restriction voted on by the city council, for publicly-owned land, I should say, privately-owned land.
Yeah, private stuff, right.
It has to be voted by the city council to either accept as a conservation restriction, either when acquired or later installed, or through a contract provision, like was in the Smith case. Similar to the Urban Renewal Plan that guides certain economic development goals that we have, similar to a master plan that says, this is what we'd like to see happen in the city for the next 10 years, similar to a housing production plan that says, this is how many housing units we'd like to see done. The Open Space and Recreation Plan is more of a, this is what we would like to see happen in the city of Gardner, but it's not an actual binding document, it's considered a guide.
And the intent, that guide, that that land should be protected is, to your mind, that's not binding?
Correct.
Or even desirable?
Desirable, I would say that there's, that's where you could see some work there. I just think with, you know, having 2,800 acres right now of protected open space in the city, as I said in my document, I think the city at this point is land poor in terms of development. I understand the need to protect certain open spaces. I think we've done a good job with that over the past, you know, two, three decades. But at this point, at what point are we hamstringing the city and not being able to further our development goals and really meet what we need to do for the residents who live here? And that's really what brought this proposal forward. Aside from the traffic concerns that are there and everything else, is that we just need land for the demand that we're seeing, both from our residents and from people who are looking to come here.
I can't think of anything else right now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, gentlemen, let's discuss. I have to say, I find it very disturbing to find out that the Open Space and Recreation Development Plan really has no bite to it at all, that lands that are marked on, in the appendices, I don't remember their letters, I don't handle the thing very often, that are considered protected and restricted. Well, that's not really, that's disturbing. And it's, you know, it's a guide only. I was not aware of that, I'm quite shocked by that. So, we're looking at commercial development on those two parcels up in the corner. We'll call them, what are they, M4722-4, M4724-1? Oh, 22 and 24 for short. If commercial, if, well, first of all, the city council has to approve. If commercial development were to go forward on that, it would be under special permit. And, you know, there's the usual list of, not the usual list, conditions that we can attach to that if it were to be developed. And then there's the other question of, do we think this is really appropriate for that area, considering the old watershed land next door and the protected areas that are there? So that's, that's a conundrum. Your thoughts, your feelings?
I think seeing, seeing it's only two properties now instead of 10 or 13 of what it was originally, changing the zoning would, in a way, limit its use, as opposed to being residential, rural residential to, it ends up to be commercial to. So that limits it to the number of entities that might be there. And it's the willingness of the city to sell the property if there's enough interest to benefit the city. So it would take certainly some actions on the part of the planning board, as well as the city council, to approve such a use based on someone's commercial interest in a, one of the pieces of property, or portions of it. I'm excited about it, but I think by virtue of the fact that it, in a way, restricts uses, I might be in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Quick question, if it does go into the commercial under it, we would have to provide sewer and water out there?
That would be done. The MRPC study that was shown last week, you know, it said if certain commercial developments could operate off of well and septic, or it would be up to the developer themselves to run the water and sewer out to the site. That wouldn't be something that the city would do. We'd charge the developer for all of that.
It'd certainly keep developers away.
Yeah. Unless they have the actual footing to be able to do something over there. And that's the other protection, I think, that we have with this land, is that unless you actually have a financial backing and a good business plan for what you're going to be doing, to have that financial backing there, you're not going to be able to really do much with this property.
It has to be a cost-benefit decision to that.
Exactly.
Well, it could also install septic and well.
Yes, you could.
Where's the bike trail in relation to those? I'm a little disoriented.
Bike trail is...
Oh, it's that red line?
Yes, yeah, this taken up here, I should have said this too. This was 468 acres under the original plan, under the amended plan, it's 170 acres. So it's severely... You can't really see the bike trail on this one here, but it's the red line.
The diagonal lines that are there along with the solid line that runs through it, that delineates the watershed overlay protection?
The lines here?
Yes.
That should just delineate what this is now, before this map was made.
With the line that comes over, I see that it...
Oh, that, this here?
Yes.
I drew on it. This is the, let's see, this version here, this is the actual, what delineates the watershed. So the watershed ends at this bluish line here. The Surface Water Protection Overlay zoning district is this pink line that comes here.
So it's my understanding there'd be no building, if you would, within that, that one section?
I mean, not without a special permit from the planning board, for only specific uses allowed in the ordinance that's in your book. There's actually several that could be done, but again, it's all through special permit and conditions of the planning board.
24, I'm pretty familiar with, because I'm a bicyclist, I'm out there a lot. 22, isn't that a little wet over there?
It's, we're having a survey of it done right now, just so we can get an accurate record of our...
I'm not insinuating it's wetland, but it just popped in my, isn't it pretty soupy out there?
The only real place it's wet is really around the border over here. Wilder Brook is actually in here, so it's got some distance to it. Really, the wet soupy area, that you, to use your terminology, is really about right here at the border of those two properties.
Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, Wilder Brook is outside the watershed?
Outside, right here.
It does cross through a portion of that property, and there are some wetlands.
Of not, excuse me, Wilder Brook crosses through this property, not...
It touches that, and there are, and there are wetlands, in that, the southern, kind of south-western.
Corner.
Yeah, in that area.
Bailey Brook's there too, right?
Bailey Brook is further west.
Doesn't it run along the eastern portion of the northern parcel?
Bailey Brook is right here.
It goes into Parker's Pond, right?
Yeah. Wilder Brook goes into Parker's Pond. Bailey Brook ends up in the other river, or no, down off of Parker's Pond, I don't remember. I did look at it though.
Yeah, Bailey Brook is right here.
Bailey Brook runs into the western portion of, or the northern portion of Parker's Pond. So when it wraps around and comes in through underneath the culvert, isn't it?
That's Bailey.
That's Bailey, yeah.
Yeah. Bailey starts here.
Yeah. Bailey starts there?
Well, it's, it's located here, it doesn't, yeah.
Excuse, Mr. Chairman, I can just clarify. Bailey Brook goes through Houghton Pond into the other river directly. It's our only cold water fishery's Brook. Wilder Brook goes into Parker's Pond, as the city engineer said. It already imperils water resource in the city, so it's Houghton Pond. Thank you.
Two books to the interaction, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, point them out to me again, they're outside, yes?
Bailey's here.
Yeah.
Wilder is here.
So is that wetland, is that actually the headwater of Wilder?
No, Wilder starts, I believe, up in Winchandon and works its way down.
Okay.
So it's just a bordering wetland, it's probably decent size. So it's just a bordering wetland, it's probably decent size. Any development on that parcel obviously has to, you know, work with that. Not readily developable, obviously, as wetland.
If you need that again, I can certainly hold it back up.
Make you do flashcards up there. A living PowerPoint presentation. Any other questions or comments? Well, in light of that, I'll entertain a motion, and our options are to recommend or not recommend that recommend the city council accept a zoning change for those two parcels.
Who to recommend to the city council? Prove a zoning change, approve, to approve.
Do I hear a second? If there's no second, then the motion fails. The other option is a motion to not recommend a zoning change for those parcels.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the work the mayor has done, and I know that the land is, for commercial, is scarce. We talked to a few people on that, and we know that. But when I came on this board five years ago, my main objective on this board was to make sure that open space recreation stays. That was my purpose on this board. And so I'm going to make a motion that we recommend not to change the ordinance.
Zoning.
Zoning.
So your motion is that the planning board not recommend a zoning change for those parcels, is that correct?
That's correct.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cormier.
I, again, I can appreciate that all that's come forward this year. I can remember going out there 40 years ago and snowmobiling, and up to five years ago, walking up through the woods, just a beautiful piece of property. I've always considered it as part of the water district, whatever the maps say. It feeds, it's there, it's, I have something, I just couldn't see it changed going into commercial. That said, I second the motion that we not to recommend.
Motion is made and seconded not to recommend a zoning change for those two parcels that we're calling 22 and 24 for short by the role. Mr. Schwartz, what say you? Mr. Cormier?
No. Is that, is that what you wrote?
If you agree with the motion not to recommend, then your vote would be yes. Agreement is yes, no, I don't agree with it. So yes, yes means I agree that we not recommend a zoning change. If you vote no, means you don't agree with that.
Okay, so it'd be yes for me too, then?
Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
Can I also vote yes? So the next step after this is a joint hearing of the city council in their chambers at 6:30 PM on Monday, April 3rd. 6:30, isn't it?
Six thirty, yes.
Yes, 6:30, all right. So Monday, April 3rd, at 6:30, there's a joint hearing between the city council and the planning board on this subject. Is there any, any other business from staff?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Any notes going forward?
It's all been on the agenda.
All right, that's it then. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Like motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn any discussion. By voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion cap carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Aye, Mr. Mayor.